We found Maria.
Um, she's not. Oh, she is joining now, it looks like.
Okay. I don't see her yet, but she must be here somewhere.
She's here.
Here? Okay. This is difficult because you gotta keep scrolling around to find everybody. All right, are we ready to begin? You're, we're all set? Okay. I'd like to call this a special meeting of the Jamestown City Council to order the June fifteenth meeting. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilman Sheldon?
Here.
James?
Here.
Caruba?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Eklund?
Here.
Graham Reinhardt?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
And Dulce?
Here. And would the clerk please read the notice of the special meeting?
Dear council members, please take notice in accordance with the provisions of section C nineteen of the Charter of the City of Jamestown. And in my capacity as mayor and chief executive officer of said city, to hereby call a special meeting of the Jamestown City Council to be held at seven o'clock PM Monday, June fifteenth, twenty twenty via video conference. The purpose of the special meeting shall be to take action on the following items. Number one, an ordinance establishing chapter one ninety of the Jamestown City Code titled Outdoor Dining. Number two, an ordinance amending chapter one ninety-eight dash two of the Jamestown City Code entitled Noise. Number three, an ordinance establishing chapter two seventeen of the Jamestown City Code entitled Public Market. And number four, a resolution adopting a twenty twenty Parklet Pilot Program and establishing a seasonal permit fee structure. Please also take notice that due to the New York State Public Health State of Emergency and by executive order of the Governor of the State of New York, the public will be allowed. This special meeting shall be available via live stream at JamestownNY.gov/live and transcribed. All public comments should be submitted in writing by five PM the day before the meeting via email to clerk@jamestownny.gov or via USPS mail to City Clerk Municipal Building two hundred East Third Street, Jamestown, New York, one four seven zero one. Very truly yours, Edward A. Sunquist.
Thank you. And I think what I'll do, I know we do have some correspondence. I believe they all pertain to the third item on the agenda, so we'll wait until we read that resolution or possible ordinance change. And then you can read all of the letters pertaining to that one at once. So with that, I believe Councilman Sheldon, you are going to be reading resolution number one, ordinance change number one, so you may go ahead and do that.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I have an ordinance establishing section one ninety of the Code of the City of Jamestown entitled Outdoor Dining.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments regarding the first ordinance amendment?
Uh, I, I have a a couple of comments on that, Mr. President. I spoke to a couple of you already about this, that the outdoor dining has been paired with food trucks and food carts. I did some due diligence and I reached out to several restaurants downtown, approximately about six of them. I spoke to the owners of those restaurants. I advised them that this was coming up for a vote. And I just wanted to get a feeling of what their opinion was on it. And all six individuals were not in favor of food trucks in the downtown area. There was one owner that he likes the idea of food trucks. He's talking about a food truck himself, but more so to utilize outside the Jamestown area to try to expand his business and occasionally using it inside. A lot of the business owners said that they're presently operating on a shoestring budget due to COVID nineteen. Some of them are, are even, what they said are surviving on loans because of COVID nineteen. And they felt that the food trucks downtown and the distance it's being given a hundred feet, they felt that that wasn't adequate. And they felt that there'd be direct competition to their business and it would be detrimental to their, to their restaurants. They don't have so much of a problem with their neighbors as far as neighboring restaurants doing stuff outdoors. I know there's one individual that wants to have a, a food cart outside for business. I support that. I support outsiders coming in, not their neighbors. So I'm recommending that, is there any way that we can possibly split these two issues? I think with COVID nineteen, it's imperative that we pass this outdoor dining to try to get businesses back on their feet. But I think we need more discussion when it comes to food trucks and food carts. How or if this is going to work? Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I do, President Dulce. I too have discussed this with, been called by multiple businesses and discussed it with some. Also discussed it in my email yesterday to all of you and as well as today that I have some real vital concerns about this food truck. I really want this ordinance, I asked earlier today to have it split into two. I feel they're two separate issues and I feel strongly about both. The outdoor dining should go through, we should be able, especially during COVID nineteen, to help those businesses downtown to bring business. But there is vital concerns and discussions about the food trucks. I'm not sliding anybody's work. I'm not sliding anybody's intentions. But there needs to be more discussion. Like Jeff said, there are businesses downtown that have survived through COVID, but only through PPE. And let's be honest, right now with things not open, the business and volume traffic downtown is not there to sustain competition with food trucks and with businesses. So we somehow need to marry these, these two. And, and an email in the ninth hour is not going to help us understand that, much less convey it back to these businesses. So I would love to see this split into two tonight. If it cannot, I will be voting no, and it's a darn shame because I truly support the outdoor dining.
So you're suggesting that they, we have a separate, are you saying to separate the dining from the food trucks? And then you want to table the food truck?
I do. I do. I think the public needs more discussion. Unfortunately, today even someone in the media whose system was down didn't get the email about the special meeting to today. I don't think that's doing due diligence to our, our businesses, much less the community at large.
Mr. President, I'd like to speak to it as well.
Thank you, go ahead.
I would concur with both Councilwoman Eklund and Councilman Russell. I know in the past when we've had just food carts downtown, we're not even talking mobile food trucks, that we have gotten some concerns from restaurants and businesses downtown that don't set up the carts. And I had heard from many of them that they felt it was unfair for them to compete and having carts set up right in front of their businesses or down the street. And, you know, we have to consider the people that are paying taxes or paying rent downtown and what the issues are going to be for them trying to go forward. Restaurant business is tough to make a living. There's a very slim profit margin. And I imagine it's been extremely difficult for all of them to try to get through this time with, with the COVID nineteen going on that people are doing some takeout, but I'm sure with our people going downtown to work, they're not getting the volume of business that they would see during the day for lunch or even after, after work. So I, I think, you know, as in, and I know we really need to deal with the outdoor dining. I understand that because by the time we would delay this, it wouldn't give them much of a season to get this all together and get any seating outdoors to serve people. But I think the food truck, any kind of mobile vending, food carts, trucks are going to be problematic for some of the businesses right now. And I think, and I would agree that we need to give it some more time to really look at it. And I did not get any calls on this one issue, but as I said, in the past, I have gotten complaints when there were food carts during events. And a lot of them are from outside the area. So I think the comments have all been well thought through and I think we really need to consider doing that.
Mr. President, I also too would like, if we could split this issue, because it does sound like there, we're looking at two different things. And it does sound like the outdoor dining really needs to happen. And if we could separate the food trucks issue with that, you know, I would, I would agree with the rest of my council members with that thought.
Sir, President, I have a question. What is the issue with the food trucks, the distance, the hundred feet versus the two hundred feet? Is that what we're really talking about? And is two hundred feet even possible downtown?
Well, I think that's, that's a question. I think that from what I am gathering that we haven't really maybe answered all the questions and that I jump in if I'm wrong. I think you're just saying you need more time to, to go through this, but you don't want to hold up part A of the resolution. You just want to table part B, is that correct?
Correct.
Correct.
For further discussion.
I second that.
I mean, I would support the first part, the, the food truck question, I think, is still something I, I think I'd like to see downtown. But, and I don't know if two hundred feet is gonna, you know, it seems like it's too great of a distance. I don't know. But if we need more time to look at that, I guess if you can split them, I suppose it's.
Can we ask the Corporation Council how he thinks we can split this?
Yeah, I, I asked Elliot earlier today if that was a possibility. So Elliot, if you, you want to comment on that and how the procedure would work on that?
Yes, we would, we would amend the, the ordinance change as is right now to place reserved in the first part of that section, reserving the food trucks and then forwarding the sidewalk cafe and street dining ordinance onwards. And that would be done with the City Clerk, Jen Williams, making that change.
So we don't really have to make any specific amendment from the floor to vote on? Or do we just change? We could still vote this in as is, as it's written or as it's published here, but then just have the clerk strike out that part and table it for now, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
We don't need to have a, a specific amendment or resolution change from the floor?
I will, I'm gonna defer to the clerk on this one, how she, she'd want it.
Tony, I think we would need an amendment on the floor. Someone will need to make the motion, we need a second, and then we'll call the roll on the amendment in order to strike that.
The reason I'm asking before we do that is because the actual ordinance, the way it's written, doesn't even mention the food truck cart on it. It just says outdoor dining, and that's just the first, the first part of it. So, so correct me if I'm wrong, you would like an amendment that would strike out the food truck part of it and have it tabled for now? And then we would just be voting on the first part, which would be the outdoor dining?
Or second part?
Second part, okay.
Yep, one ninety dash four and one ninety dash five.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm looking at two different things, trying to gather, yeah, okay. So one ninety dash two. Let me just make this correction, and one ninety dash four. So one ninety dash two would be tabled? Or correct?
Two, one ninety dash two and three would be tabled.
Two and three are tabled. And four would then be voted on tonight?
Four and five would be voted on tonight.
Right. Okay, so I would need, we would need an amendment from the floor, tabling one ninety dash two and three for further discussion. And then voting on just one ninety dash three and four, which deals with the outdoor dining.
I'll be glad to make the amendment.
Do I have a second?
Like, yeah, I would like to propose an amendment to table section one ninety dash two and one ninety dash three regarding food carts and mobile vending for further discussion while still continuing to vote on the importance of one ninety dash four and one ninety dash five.
And I would second that motion.
Okay, so it's proposed by Councilwoman Eklund, seconded by Councilwoman Caruba. Would the clerk please poll the council on the proposed amendments to the resolution?
Councilman Sheldon?
Hi.
James?
Hi.
Caruba?
Hi.
Olson?
Hi.
Nelson?
Hi.
Eklund?
Hi.
Graham Reinhardt?
Hi.
Russell?
Uh.
And Dulce?
Hi. So those two parts of the ordinance are tabled for now. So now we have to vote on the one ninety dash four and five. Or please poll the council?
Councilman Sheldon?
Hi.
James?
Hi.
Caruba?
Hi.
Olson?
Hi.
Nelson?
Hi.
Eklund?
Hi.
Graham Reinhardt?
Hi.
Russell?
Hi.
Dulce?
Okay, so just for clarification for the public and for our own sake, we did vote in tonight unanimously, the parts of the resolution dealing with outdoor dining. And we have tabled, at least for now, the discussion or the ordinance change on food carts and, and food trucks for further discussion and for a vote probably at the next voting session. Correct? Good? Okay, just want to make sure everybody understood that. Our second ordinance to be voted on tonight, ordinance change, will be sponsored by Councilwoman Reinhardt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have an ordinance amending section one ninety-eight dash two of the Code of the City of Jamestown entitled Noise.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on this? Saying none, the clerk, please poll the council.
Councilman Sheldon?
Hi.
James?
Hi.
Caruba?
Hi.
Olson?
Hi.
Nelson?
Hi.
Eklund?
Hi.
Graham Reinhardt?
Hi.
Russell?
Hi.
Dulce?
Hi. Ordinance change is passed. The next ordinance change will be sponsored by Councilman Russell.
Mr. President, presidents, I have an ordinance establishing chapter two seventeen of the Jamestown City Code entitled Public Market.
Thank you. I know there are several letters of correspondence, so if the clerk would like to read those into the record before we vote on that.
Sure. Dear Jamestown City Council members, my name is Emily Garrick and I am a public school teacher in Jamestown. I'm writing in support of the ordinance establishing a public market up for vote. Farmers markets are essential aspects of any community and Jamestown is no exception. They provide significant economic impact by supporting local family-owned farms and small businesses, drive traffic to downtown corridors and support access to healthy, fresh foods for low-income community members. The mobile market specifically addresses the issue of food insecurity faced by a large majority of our residents. With thirty-three percent of Jamestown residents living in poverty and twenty-one percent without a vehicle or access to transportation, programs like mobile markets are essential to increasing food access and affordability. Everyone deserves the right to access healthy, affordable foods. The Jamestown public and mobile markets are important to me because they impact my students' access to healthy food. The last thing we need is hungry kids in the city. I hope you consider voting to codify these important city programs and show your support for healthy food access, small food entrepreneurs in our community at large. Thank you, Emily Garrick, Lakewood, New York.
Thank you.
I very much support the proposed ordinance that would allow public markets in Jamestown's public spaces. This is a great way to support truly small businesses and family farms and to provide healthy local food products for more of Jamestown's neighborhoods. I urge passage of this ordinance. Patricia Anzidio, thirty-four Auburn Avenue, Jamestown, New York.
Dear City Council members, I Claire Cerro, resident at three 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 two West Oak Hill Road, Jamestown, am writing in support of the ordinance establishing a public market up for vote. Farmers markets are essential aspects of any community and Jamestown is no exception. They provide significant economic impact by supporting local, family-owned farms and small business, drive traffic to downtown corridors and support access to healthy, fresh foods for low-income community members. The mobile market specifically addresses the issue of food insecurity faced by a large majority of our residents. With thirty-three percent of Jamestown residents living in poverty and twenty-one percent without a vehicle or access to transportation, programs like mobile markets are essential to increasing food access and affordability. Everyone deserves the right to access healthy, affordable foods. The Jamestown public and mobile markets are important to me because my low-income friends without reliable transportation deserve affordable, quality food. I hope you consider voting to codify these important city programs and show your support for healthy food access, small food entrepreneurs and our community at large. Thank you, Claire Cerro. Dear Jamestown City Council members, I Frank Bessie, resident, resident at two forty-three Halleck Street, am writing in support of the ordinance establishing a public market up for vote. I support this both as a city resident as well as, as owner of Labyrinth Press Company and Brazil Craft Beer and Wine Lounge. Farmers markets are essential aspects of any community and Jamestown is no exception. They provide significant economic impact by supporting local, family-owned farms and small business, drive traffic to downtown corridors and support access to healthy, fresh foods for low-income community members. The mobile market specifically addresses the issue of food insecurity faced by a large majority of our residents. With thirty-three percent of Jamestown residents living in poverty and twenty-one percent without a vehicle or access to transportation, programs like mobile markets are essential to increasing food access and affordability. Everyone deserves the right to access healthy, affordable foods. I hope you consider voting to codify these, these important city programs and show your support for healthy food access, small food entrepreneurs in our community at large. Thank you, Frank Bessie. Dear Jamestown City Council members, I Jen Gatton-Bane, resident, resident at two oh three Van Buren Street in Jamestown, am writing in support of the ordinance establishing a public market up for vote. Now more than ever, farmers markets are essential aspects of any community and Jamestown is no exception. These markets provide significant economic impact by supporting local, family-owned farms and small businesses. They drive traffic to downtown corridors and provide access to healthy, fresh foods for low-income community members. The mobile market specifically addresses the issue of food insecurity faced by a large majority of our residents. With thirty-three percent of Jamestown residents living in poverty and twenty-one percent without a vehicle or access to transportation, programs like mobile markets are essential to increasing food access and affordability. Everyone deserves the right to access healthy, affordable foods. The Jamestown public and mobile markets are important to me because I am passionate about supporting local agriculture and business while reducing my carbon footprint by buying foods that are locally grown and products that are locally produced. I sincerely hope you will consider voting to codify these important city programs and show your support for healthy food access, small food entrepreneurs in our community at large. Thank you. Jen Gatton-Bane, spiritual mentor and teacher. And she just provides a phone number. Dear Jamestown City Council members, I Shelley Wells, resident at thirty-five sixty-five Route three ninety-four, Asheville, New York, am writing in support of the ordinance establishing a public market up for vote. Farmers markets are essential aspects of any community and Jamestown is no exception. They provide significant economic impact by supporting local, family-owned farms and small business, drive traffic to downtown corridors and support access to healthy, fresh foods for low-income community members. The mobile market specifically addresses the issue of food insecurity faced by a large majority of our residents. With thirty-three percent of Jamestown residents living in poverty and twenty-one percent without a vehicle or access to transportation, programs like mobile markets are essential to increasing food access and affordability. Everyone deserves the right to access healthy, affordable foods. The Jamestown public and mobile markets are important to Chautauqua County and me. I work for the local health department and lack of access to healthy, affordable food is a contributor to chronic disease. I hope you consider voting to codify the, these important city programs and show your support for healthy food access, small food entrepreneurs in our community at large. Thank you, Shelley Wells. Dear Jamestown City Council members, I Taylor Scott, resident at twenty-eighteenth Street. I am writing in support of the ordinance establishing a public market up for vote. Farmers markets are essential aspects of any community and Jamestown is no exception. They provide significant economic impact by supporting local, family-owned farms and small business, drive traffic to downtown corridors and support access to healthy, fresh foods for low-income community members. The mobile market specifically addresses the issue of food insecurity faced by a large majority of our residents. With thirty-three percent of Jamestown residents living in poverty and twenty-one percent without a vehicle or access to transportation, programs like mobile markets are essential to increasing food access and affordability. Everyone deserves the right to access healthy, affordable foods. I hope you consider voting to codify this, these important city programs and show your support for healthy food access, small food entrepreneurs and our community at large. Thank you, Taylor Scott. Dear Jamestown City Council members, as a resident of Jamestown, I am writing in support of the ordinance establishing a public market which is up for vote. Farmers markets are essential aspects of any community and Jamestown is no exception. They provide significant economic impact by supporting local, family-owned farms and small businesses, drive traffic to downtown corridors and support access to healthy, fresh foods for low-income community members. The mobile market specifically addresses the issue of food insecurity faced by a large majority of our residents. With thirty-three percent of Jamestown residents living in poverty and twenty-one percent without a vehicle or access to reliable transportation, programs like mobile markets are essential to increasing food access and affordability. Everyone deserves the right to access healthy and affordable food. I hope you will consider voting to codify these important city programs and show your support for healthy food access, which should be a right for all, as well as small food entrepreneurs in our community at large. Sincerely, Kelsey Edwards, fifty-seven Pershing Avenue. Dear Jamestown City Council members, as a resident of the City of Jamestown, I am writing in support of the ordinance establishing a public market to be brought to a vote and supported by this governmental body. Farmers markets are essential aspects of any community and Jamestown is no exception. They provide significant economic impact by supporting local, family-owned farms and small businesses and drive traffic to downtown corridors. However, most importantly, they support access to healthy, fresh foods for low-income community members who are not within walking distance access to supermarkets with fresh foods. The mobile market specifically addresses the issue of food insecurity faced by a large majority of our residents. With thirty-three percent of Jamestown residents living below the poverty line and twenty-one percent not having a vehicle or access to transportation, programs like mobile markets are essential to increasing food access and affordability. Everyone deserves the right to access healthy, affordable foods in their neighborhoods and communities. I encourage you to vote to codify these important city programs and show your support for healthy food access, small food entrepreneurs and our community at large. With thanks, Suzanne Facet Wright. Dear Jamestown City Council members, I Teal Weatherly, resident at fifty-six Norwood Avenue, Jamestown, New York, am writing in support of the ordinance establishing a public market up for vote. Farmers markets are essential aspects of any community and Jamestown is no exception. They provide significant economic impact by supporting local, family-owned farms and small business, drive traffic to downtown corridors and support access to healthy, fresh foods for low-income community members. The mobile market specifically addresses the issue of food insecurity faced by a large majority of our residents. With thirty-three percent of Jamestown residents living in poverty and twenty-one percent without a vehicle or access to transportation, programs like mobile markets are essential to increasing food access and affordability. Everyone deserves the right to access healthy, affordable foods. The Jamestown public and mobile markets are important to me, are important to me. I hope you consider voting to codify these important city programs and show your support for healthy food access, small food entrepreneurs in our community at large. Thank you, Teal M. Weatherly. Submission of public comment for the City Council regarding ordinance establishment of a public market. Dear Jamestown City Council members, as a resident of the City of Jamestown, I am writing in support of the ordinance establishing a public market up for vote. Farmers markets are essential aspects of any community and Jamestown is no exception. They provide significant economic impact by supporting local, family-owned farms and small business, drive traffic to downtown corridors and support access to healthy, fresh foods for low-income community members. The mobile market specifically addresses the issue of food insecurity faced by a large majority of our residents. With thirty-three percent of Jamestown residents living in poverty and twenty-one percent without a vehicle or access to transportation, programs like mobile markets are essential to increasing food access and affordability. Three years ago, when I was without a vehicle and had no extra room in my budget to access public transport, I was riding five miles to and from work on my bicycle and trying my absolute best to dig myself out of the hole I had put myself in financially. During this time, I had to rely on the help I had from friends and family to get from Jamestown to Lakewood in order to buy healthy groceries. And when they weren't available to offer help, I had to resort to walking to Seven Eleven or Quick Fill to buy frozen or processed foods in order to have some form of a meal. I was lucky in the sense that I had people willing and able to help me, but a lot of our residents do not have that luxury. A mobile market would provide the healthy choices that every, that everyone needs to properly. A mobile market would provide the healthy choices that every, that everyone needs to properly fuel their bodies. Everyone deserves the right to access healthy, affordable food. I hope you consider voting to codify these important city programs and show your support for healthy food access, small food entrepreneurs and our community at large. Thank you, Caitlin Clark, resident of 302 West Fifth Street, Jamestown, New York. Dear Jamestown City Council members, my name is Autumn Echo Swanson, located at 130 Lakeview Avenue. I'm writing in support of the ordinance establishing a public market up for vote. Farmers markets are essential aspects of any community and Jamestown is no exception. They provide significant economic impact by supporting local, family-owned farms and small business, drive traffic to downtown corridors and support access to healthy, fresh foods for low-income community members. The mobile market specifically addresses the issue of food insecurity faced by a large majority of our residents. With 33% of Jamestown residents living in poverty and 21% without a vehicle or access to transportation, programs like mobile markets are essential to increasing food access and affordability. Everyone deserves the right to, to access healthy, affordable foods. The Jamestown public and mobile markets are important to me because it is an opportunity for me and my family to access these delicious local foods and enjoy time in downtown Jamestown together. I hope you consider voting to codify these important city programs and show your support for healthy food access, small food entrepreneurs and our community at large. Thank you, Autumn Echo Swanson. Dear Jamestown City Council members, I Angela Kaylee, resident at 290 Buffalo Street and writing in support of the ordinance establishing a public market up for vote. Farmers markets are essential aspects of any community and Jamestown is no exception. They provide significant economic impact by supporting local, family-owned farms and small business, drive traffic to downtown corridors and support access to healthy, fresh foods for low-income community members. The mobile market specifically addresses the issue of food insecurity faced by a large majority of our residents. With 33% of Jamestown residents living in poverty and 21% without a vehicle or access to transportation, programs like mobile markets are essential to increasing food access and affordability. Everyone deserves the right to access healthy, affordable foods. The Jamestown public and mobile markets are important to me because they bring farm-fresh food to those within the city with little to no tram, with little to no transportation to otherwise obtain them. And it showcases downtown local businesses and promotes a healthy community. I hope you vote, I hope you consider voting to codify these important city programs and show your support for healthy food access, small food entrepreneurs and our community at large. Thank you, Angela. Dear Jamestown City Council members, my name is Luke Fodor and I am both a city resident, 311 Crosman Street and a community leader, the rector of St. Luke's. Representing both personal and professional realms, I am writing in support of the ordinance establishing a public market up for vote. Farmers markets are essential aspects of any community and Jamestown is no exception. They provide significant economic impact by supporting local, family-owned farms and small business, drive traffic to downtown corridors and support access to healthy, fresh foods for low-income community members. The mobile market specifically addresses the issue of food insecurity faced by a large majority of our residents. With 33% of Jamestown residents living in poverty and 21% without a vehicle or access to transportation, programs like mobile markets are essential to increasing food access and affordability. Everyone deserves the right to access healthy, affordable foods. The Jamestown public and mobile markets are important to me because they support healthy lifestyles necessary for healthy communities. As a pastor, I know that health bodies create spiritually healthy communities. Visiting the markets weekly with my family, I know that they offer accessible food and community-based education to our city residents that would not otherwise attain. The public and mobile markets are, are important enough to me that I have put my money where my mouth is, personally donating hundreds of dollars to the market while also working professionally to create support. And then in parentheses, St. Luke's has donated over $15,000 and $10,000 of in-kind support to the market in 2020. I hope you'll match our efforts with your own public support. I hope you consider voting to codify these important city programs and show your support for healthy food access, small food entrepreneurs and our community at large. Faithfully, the Reverend Luke Fodor. City council members, thank you for taking the time tonight to accept my comment and the consideration of approving a vote in favor of the ordinance establishing a public market. As current manager of the Jamestown Public and Mobile Markets, I wanted to share a few words that I hope shed light on the importance of this ordinance and the market's role in our city. One of the first mobile market days held in this city, two young children approached our vehicle. They inquired as to what we were doing and when we shared that we were selling produce, they shared, we haven't ate yet. Do you have something we can eat? Another day, we met a young mother and her small child. We spent an hour sharing with her tomatoes, apples, grapes. She had never in her life encountered yellow tomatoes or a green apple. As I have become more entrenched in this city, as both a professional and a community member, I have listened to and experienced these stories, stories of my neighbors, my friends and my fellow Jamestown residents. Community members cannot access the public transportation needed to visit a grocery store. Local food prices are just too high to shop for a family. Seniors only receive $10 a month in SNAP benefits and must rely on food pantries for assistance. These stories have illustrated the state of food equity in our city. This is not a criticism of our city. I love our city. And it is because I love our city, I recognize that we are not immune to the issues of food inequity that plague this country. Their issues are deep and systemic and will take years to remedy, but we can start tonight. The public and mobile markets are a rare gem in our city in the fact that they are truly places accessible to all. Young, old, rich, poor, no matter one's race, ethnicity, gender identity, sexual orientation, religion, community members and tourists. The market is a shared experience. Each member of our community deserves access to foods, especially healthy foods. The market offers nutrition programs focusing on stretching SNAP dollars through state partnerships. The mobile market brings healthy foods to at-risk groups, most notably our, our senior residents. Our Sprouts program provides education and agriculture nutrition to our children. Many of our vendors are Jamestown residents, small business owners in need of your support. We are not a barrier to local business or city revitalization. We are part of the revitalization. I implore you to consider passing this ordinance to help us continue the work being done in service to our community. Many before me, my market manager predecessors, community leaders, dedicated community advocates, many have fought for this moment. I am incredibly proud of our city for it. Tonight, we can take that first step towards improving equal food access for all. Thank you once again, Linnea Carlson, Market Manager, 79 McDaniel Avenue, Jamestown. That's it.
Thank you. Okay, that's all? No more?
That's all.
You tired?
A little bit, yeah.
All right, are there any other uh, questions or comments from the council? If not, the clerk, please poll the council.
Councilman Sheldon?
Hi.
James?
I'm mute.
Hello, Vicki?
I think that was a yes.
Was that a yes?
I'm mute, Vicki.
I think she's trying.
Yeah.
Uh, Councilwoman Caruba?
Hi.
Councilman Olson?
Hi.
Nelson?
Hi.
Councilwoman Eklund?
Hi.
Councilwoman Graham Reinhardt?
Hi.
Councilman Russell?
Hi.
And Council President Dulce?
Hi, resolution is passed. Uh, our final resolution tonight, I believe is going to be sponsored by Councilman Sheldon.
Uh, yes, Mr. President, we have a resolution adopting a 2020 Parkland Pilot Program and establishing a seasonal permit fee structure.
Thank you. With any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilman Sheldon?
Hi.
James?
Hi.
Caruba?
Hi.
Olson?
Hi.
Nelson?
Hi.
Eklund?
Hi.
Graham Reinhardt?
Hi.
Russell?
Hi.
And Council President Dulce?
Hi, so resolution is passed and that would conclude our agenda because it's a special meeting, that's all the uh, matters that we could put forth uh, for vote and for open session. We do have, I understand the mayor has three items for executive session. Uh, one under contract negotiations, one under potential litigation and one under personnel matter. Um, and um, at this point, do I have a, a motion to go, first of all, I will adjourn the special meeting? And uh, do I have a motion to go into executive session for those three items?
So.
Moved by Councilwoman Caruba, second.
Second.
By Councilwoman James, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
So the special meeting is adjourned and we will go into executive session. Uh, and we'll give the mayor time to uh, disconnect.
Uh, President Dulce, just as a, a note for the, us, items for specials, for executive session. Um, we do not intend to uh, take any action uh, on those, on those items tonight. So just as a point of clarification. Um, and then for the folks that we would like to continue to have tonight, if we could have uh, Corporation Counsel Ramondo, uh, and uh, I believe that is all we need. Uh, this, actually, you know what, I apologize, um, if the comptroller and deputy comptroller could stay.
And Mr. Lehman.
Uh, and uh, Mr. Lehman is fine, yes.
Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and stop the recording.